You read this a long time ago, you got there. We talked for a week and a week, and I said, "See you Wednesday." She's like, "Ooh, might have a coffee."
Good evening. We'll call it a order. Planning Commission, Wednesday, November 16th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Mako.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clerk. Please call the roll.
Greenberg.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Mako.
Here.
Shapaka.
Here.
Sariano.
Here.
Tamarkin.
Here.
Wester.
Here.
Next is additions and corrections to the agenda. We have none. Approval of minutes. We're going to approve two different meetings here. So first, the approval of the minutes from the October 26, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved by Hicks.
A motion by Mr. Hicks. Do I have a second?
Second, Shapaka.
Second by Mr. Shapaka. Any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Hicks.
Yes.
Shapaka.
Yes.
Greenberg.
Yes.
Mako.
Yes.
Sariano.
Yes.
Tamarkin.
Yes.
Wester.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I have the Planning Commission minutes from November 2nd, 2022. Do I have a motion for that one?
So moved by Hicks.
Motion by Mr. Hicks. Do I have a second?
Second, Greenberg.
Second by Mr. Greenberg. Any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Hicks.
Yes.
Greenberg.
Yes.
Mako.
Yes.
Shapaka.
Yes.
Sariano.
Yes.
Tamarkin.
Yes.
Wester.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we're in the applicants and the speakers. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Roth, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are now at the public hearing portion of the meeting. The public hearing will operate as follows. Administrative staff will make a presentation or comment on the application. The applicant or their representative may then make a presentation or comment on the application. Public comment will then be open for three minutes allowed per speaker. Additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. Speakers must complete a speaker slip and come to the podium and state their name. The applicant will then be given 10 minutes to comment. Additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. If there is more than one application pending for a particular address, the presentation on each application may be consolidated and presented as one. At this time, will persons wishing to present testimony this evening, please rise and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, state "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. All right, we'll move into the application portion of the meeting. I'll read them into the record, and we'll turn them over to the city for a presentation. First, we have Z-0002-2022 to recommend approval to council, a zoning application, a rezone .299 acres of a 3.4 acre site for property located at 348 Granville Street, parcel ID 025-000276. Current zoning SO, proposed zoning CC, Project Castle, 348 Granville LLC, Matt Von Bargen, applicant. And I will turn it over to Mr. Blackford for a presentation.
Thank you kindly, Mr. Chair. On the screen right now, this is the location and zoning map. You can see, sort of going right through the middle of this slide, is Granville Street. The property does have frontage on Granville Street. It's on the north side of Granville. On the right-hand side of the property there, just off to the ways, a little ways, is Hamilton Road. So it's just to the west of the Hamilton Road, Granville Street intersection. The property is zoned SO, which is suburban office and institutional. That's kind of that aqua color on your screen. Some of these colors are kind of faded here a little bit on the screen, get washed out. But all you can see, like this yellow kind of color in this area, the property just to the east. Some of these properties along Hamilton Road, and all the properties fronting Granville Street on the south side, they're all zoned community commercial. So again, the proposed zoning is community commercial, significant amount of properties in and around this area are community commercial. Here are some of those. It's a, you know, mix of uses in this area. You have a number of residential multifamily developments. You also have just to the west, a couple of properties over is the library that's under construction. Right adjacent to this site is a very similar use as to what's being proposed. It's a small drive-through facility. It's the Dairy Queen. You have Gehanna-Lincoln, Firehouse Subs, BP, Donato. So again, there's a mix of uses. We start talking about maybe a mixed-use area. In my mind, for Gehanna, this is one of those areas where there's that horizontal mix. Again, a number of multifamily uses, library, and certainly a lot of restaurant activities in this area. The predominant zoning, again, is community commercial. That's the zoning that really allows for retail restaurants and offices. Here's a street view image. I believe the building was built in 1982. So, you know, it's a little bit of a dated site as far as meeting current code requirements for parking and landscaping and things of that nature. Again, Dairy Queen is just on the right-hand side of the screen, and you can see that the street view from Google is very recent because it has a library under construction. Again, it is a rezoning from suburban office to community commercial. I'll cover what those differences are in uses here very, very shortly. It's only 3/10ths of an acre. Our zoning code does not have minimum lot size for general commercial uses, so it does meet minimum lot sizes. The proposed use is a coffee shop with a drive-through. Again, when we're doing a rezoning, we're not necessarily adopting a specific tenant or use or a site plan. The site plan, you see, is conceptual. If the rezoning is approved, they have to come back before Planning Commission for a final development plan design review. And I will go out on a very small limb here and say a variance application will be necessary as well. Again, an older developed site, it's going to need some variances to current code requirements if approved. The difference in uses, suburban office is a very limiting zoning category. It really only allows for general professional medical, dental offices. A couple non-office uses are banks, library, and daycare. Other than that, it's, there's not a whole bunch of activities that are allowed. Community commercial, on the other hand, is a little bit more intense from a zoning standpoint as far as uses. Again, this is our main sort of zoning that we see up and down our main roadways, where we see our retail and restaurant activities, allows for all the office uses as well. It also allows for automotive uses, but those require a conditional use. Given the size of this property, again, it's approximately 3/10ths of an acre, a lot of those activities would never fit on a property of this size. So it's pretty limited what could actually be physically constructed because of the size of the property. So pretty low intensity when you think about, you know, what's probably going to occur. Here's the site plan that they included. Again, it's just conceptual at this point. But again, there's not a lot of property to work with, so I wouldn't be surprised if what they come in is fairly similar. Here is, you know, access off of Granville Street. This is, I believe, a shared access to the apartments that go to the rear of the property. Dairy Queen right next door, again, with a property of this size, probably going to see some setback variances and things like that in the future if approved. What's out there today wouldn't meet any code standards for setbacks or landscaping or anything of that nature either. Land use plan, this designates this area as mixed use. Again, we kind of covered some of those uses in the area and some of the difference in zonings and that. It really is sort of a mix of uses in this particular area. Retail and restaurants, those are two uses the land use plan says are ideal, desirable in the mixed-use area. This zoning allows for those activities. Building height and intensity far greater than what would be achieved on this site, again, up to 70 feet, 60-plus thousand square feet of intensity building, you know, per acre. The site's pretty small. With a drive-through facility, it'll be much less intensity than what the land use plan would call for. The land use plan does call for, you know, smaller setbacks in these areas as well. But this is meant as a guide, especially with the rezoning process here. Rezoning criteria, is it consistent with the goals of the land use plan? Again, the zoning is consistent with achieving that mix of uses and having mixed use of land use be more of a retail destination. Suburban office, again, does not allow for any retail types of activities. Is it compatible with the property with the allowed uses? In this case, this property is essentially 100% impervious. It's all developed. We know that there's actual physical ability of the land to support this kind of activity. Availability of sites elsewhere with the same zoning, compatibility of all potential uses. Again, this portion of the property to be rezoned is adjacent to the same zoning on the east, community commercial. Same zoning to the south, across the street on Granville, community commercial, and it's adjacent to suburban office, very similar zoning. Capacity of infrastructure and demand for the uses, that is the rezoning criteria. Staff, we would recommend approval. Again, we find it consistent with the land use plan recommendations. We find it extremely consistent with the surrounding development. Again, there's a lot of restaurants in this particular area. This is the zoning that allows for those types of activities. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackford. Would the applicant like to speak? Please state your name, address, and relationship to the project.
Yes, Matt Von Bargen, owner of 348 Granville Street. So, yeah, thank you all for taking the time today. You know, today, we're here to really just change the color on the map, so to speak, get updated with other sites in the area and kind of be inconsistent use with the suggested, the land use plan. As Michael alluded to, the coffee shop that you see shown is just for illustrative purposes, to just sort of, really for Michael and I to have a discussion as we were building the application. It'd be very preliminary at best to say that we haven't identified end user, but we are trying to figure out what the highest and best use of this site is. Could be office, you know, or could be a new retail restaurant use.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and turn it over to the commission for questions, comments.
I don't have any questions.
I just have one. I found it here. If we change the zoning, Mr. Blackford, it could still be office.
Correct. So the beauty of the community commercial zoning category is that it does allow for office uses by right, essentially pretty much the same office use as that suburban office allows. It just allows for significantly more retail kind of uses.
Okay. So our job on Planning Commission is to recommend approval to city council of a zoning change. So do I have a motion for the recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I've moved that we recommend approval to city council on the zoning application,
I have a motion by Mr. Greenberg. Do I have a second?
Second, Mako.
Second by Mr. Mako. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I am, I'm going to be in favor of the recommendation. I think it's consistent with properties in and around the area, I would say. You know, understanding the site is limited in its footprint, and the plan was just conceptual. At some point, we're going to have to start thinking about what we want the street life to be like on Granville. And I think right now, it's, it's very car-centric. And, you know, I think with some planning adjustments in terms of the way we're thinking about whether it's setbacks or circulation, there may be some better strategies in terms of the infrastructure and pushing things forward towards the street and pushing vehicles towards the rear of the sites. That may be helpful. So while it might impact this as we get into, you know, potentially further discussion on planning and design review and things like that, just something to consider, how we want our street to, the vision for that, for that part of town. So.
Thank you, Mr. Sariano. Mr. Greenberg.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'm also in favor of the rezoning and was pleased to see in the application that there was a Phase One environmental site assessment that was provided to us for review and did take a look at it. There are some sites within a quarter mile that have underground storage tanks that may cause issues in the future, not with this site, but other sites down the road. So we do need to make sure that we get those environmental site assessments when they're available in front of us. So, yes, I'm in favor and wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Mr. Shapaka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to kind of echo what Mr. Sariano said, that I would like to see a workshop, a workshop with this prior to any kind of final design development plan, because I think there is a sensitivity to the streetfront and amassing that we're trying to do with the other buildings that have been recently built along the street level. So hopefully, that will be encouraged by the owner. But I'm in favor of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shapaka. Mr. Mako.
Yes, I'm also going to be voting in favor of this. I think it's, fits very well with the existing land uses there. I drive by this site constantly. I think it's going to be a very good fit in between, you know, the high school there on the one side and the new library on the other side. So I think it's going to be a really good fit. I just hope that when we get into the design review, that, you know, we can make this really look appealing to the, to the eye with the aesthetics going forward. But I know we're talking about land use and zoning here, so I think this is quite compatible. And again, I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mako. And with that, Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Greenberg.
Yes.
Mako.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Shapaka.
Yes.
Sariano.
Yes.
Tamarkin.
Yes.
Wester.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We look forward to seeing more on this project in the future. Next, we will move on to DR-0022-2022 to consider a design review application for a site plan, landscaping, and building design for property located at 789 Science Boulevard, parcel ID 025-013637, 025-013666, and 025-013667. Current zoning OCT-L, Golf Depot Expansion, Curtis Williams Senior, applicant. Mr. Blackford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The property is on the screen right now. It's, it's a very large parcel, but we're really only focusing on the eastern part that's just off of Science Boulevard. It is zoned OCT, golf courses and allowed use. Really, what this application comes down to is a relatively modest-sized accessory building. There is a lot of history on this request. I'll just catch everybody up to, up to speed on it. There was an identical request that was submitted to Planning Commission that was heard in August of last year. That was denied. There was a final development plan and variance request that was approved. And I believe the applicants are working on some of those elements related to the construction of the parking area. Again, just to kind of refresh our memories, the designer view, the issue that was discussed, and this is looking at some of the minutes from, from the meeting, the comments that were sort of in favor and unfavorable on some of the concerns with the building was that the building design really wasn't in character with the existing buildings out there, that it was taller than the original buildings and that the scale should come down. There were also some comments made about landscaping and that the landscaping around this, this building was, was, was appropriate and did a nice job considering some of the limitations of the landfill. But again, there was an opportunity for improved design. You know, the applicant can, can share with you when, when they're up here, some of the, they went back to the drawing board and some of the costs associated with making some improvements. So what I'm showing you now is from the application, and all this information is the exact same from that August 2021 application. So essentially, it's the exact same request. On the screen, you can see some parking areas. This was also part of the final development plan. So this, you know, they have their, their approvals for. The designer view technically is for landscape, lighting, and, and building design. And really, what's main, main, most germane to this request, and, and that is this Golf Academy building, which I believe is 20 feet in height and just over 1,500 square feet here. And it's right across from the existing heated tea area. When I look at the map and I measure this out, this is about just over 500 feet from the right-of-way of Science Boulevard. It's also partially shielded by the Wesley Construction Building. There is a landscape plan. You can't see all the details about the plantings, but as we zoom in, there is a significant amount of landscaping in and around this building. And I think that was talked about a little bit back last year. And again, there's, I believe, the landfill, the cap on the landfill prevents certain types of trees from being planted. The overlay that's associated with this property does require plantings around the building, so this meets the overlay requirement. This is above and beyond what our code would normally require. So most facilities here in town, they don't require this type of building foundation plantings and that. So this is unique characteristic of the overlay. Hopefully, that would soften some of the views of the, the building. These are the renderings here within the application. Again, these are the same from, from last year. I believe this building's a little bit taller than some of the buildings out there. Again, it does, these doors do face the driving range, so they don't face Science Boulevard. They would, again, face the, the driving range there. This image kind of gets washed out on the screen here a little bit, but this is a Google street view. This is the entryway into the Golf Depot facility. This is the entryway into the Golf Depot facility. Right here is the clubhouse building. This building sits considerably closer than the proposed building would. So again, if we're kind of trying to see what that visual impact is, this is a street view image of the existing building, which again is closer. The existing clubhouse is closer to the road than the proposed building. Moving down the street here, this is Wesney Construction's building here that sits out in front of Golf Depot. Here is the accessory building that's out there already, the heated tea area, right in this general location. And I'm sorry, I'll try to also go over here maybe on my clicker. You know, just to the right of that existing building is where the proposed building is going. So again, that 1,500-square-foot building is going approximately in this area. And again, that's about 500 feet from the road. Design review, the approval-denial criteria, is it compatible with the existing structure? Does it contribute to the improvement of the design review district? Does it contribute to the economic and community vitality? Does it maintain, protect, and enhance the physical surroundings? Staff, well, you know, we did recommend approval of it the first time around. I guess doing it again here the second time around. It is a similar material, building color, and style. There are some differences. It wasn't as architecturally, as many elements associated with it as the previous buildings. It is relatively modest-sized. Again, it's just over 1,500 square feet. It's limited visibility. It's partially screened from Wesney Construction. There's also some building foundations being planted as well. With the design review, if Planning Commission chooses, you can condition the approval. So if in theory, you want to see a little more landscaping or a little bit different building color or something of that nature, that's certainly an option that Planning Commission has as part of their motion to approve if you all choose. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back to your capable hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackford. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes.
Please, again, name, address, and relationship to the project.
Thank you. My name is Curtis Williams. I'm president of COSIC, the Franklin County Land Bank, who owns the landfill slash golf course. And my address, work address, is 845 Parsis Avenue, Columbus, 43206.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blackford. We are very grateful for your having us back to reconsider our application for design review. After our last meeting with you, we spent a lot of hours, a ton of time, trying to incorporate your recommendations into the design. We have our architect here, who we talked to a lot, and we looked at a number of renderings that incorporated your design. And so we really did take it to heart. And what you all didn't know at the time is that we had already purchased the building. And the building is a metal building, and it was in transit. So with that being said, we had to not only look at the design elements, we really had to talk to the manufacturer of the building. It's a metal building. And one of the concerns were that, okay, we already have the building, so we can't go back and make some, some changes to the material you already have. So we had a lot of conversations with the manufacturer and also the installer of the building. What we found was that because the building had already been prefabbed, it's on its way, that any kind of modifications would cost us a lot of money. We spent $80,000 for the building, and now any modification would cost an additional 30-plus. And we were concerned about that. We became more concerned when we found out that the modifications would void the warranty on the building. And as a small nonprofit dealing with just a landfill in itself, that's one other hiccup that we really didn't want to deal with in terms of having problems with property on a landfill. So we thought about it, we thought about it, we didn't, hadn't done anything at this point. We had not even gathered labor costs because we didn't have, we couldn't get the labor costs until we have a contract. So we've got $80,000 on initial expenditure. We have 30K on top of that. Now we have additional labor. And we have avoided warranty on a new building. So we felt that was a little much and for the building that, and the approvals we're trying to make at the landfill, at the golf course, trying to give Mr. Hammond a place to really hold up his business. And quite frankly, his business is going well. But those costs that we have to incur, we have to pass on to him. And I don't know if he's going to be able to handle it from a lease standpoint. So we tried very hard, and we are, again, wanted to meet your requests and your recommendations. But quite frankly, I don't think we could get there because of the cost of it. So we certainly appreciate your reconsideration of our request and approve our initial request of design review. Be glad to answer any questions or address any comments you might have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this project? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the agenda and turn it over to the commission Any questions? Comments? We'll go to comments in a minute. Mr. Shepaka? No? All right. We'll close this, and I'll ask, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item DR-0022-2022.
I have a motion by Mr. Soriano. Do I have a second?
Second by Hicks.
Second by Mr. Hicks. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to abstain from voting on this issue, being the original architect of the complex. I think that anything that I say might sway one way or the other, so abstain.
An abstention by Mr. Shepaka.
Mr. Chair, understanding some of the difficulties around the, the fact that this building's prefab, avoiding the warranty, some things like that, you know, I'm completely sympathetic to that idea. When we look at design review, we obviously look at compatibility. So I think our comments from the previous, from the previous session where we reviewed the design, I think still hold true. I think the, I think the building is the same color as the surrounding buildings, but I think that's probably where the compatibility ends in terms of architectural features, shade shadow, things that we discussed that may or may not have an impact on the functionality of the building. So all that is to say, I'll be in favor of the design review, but, you know, tempering judgment in terms of the character of the, designing character of the building, so.
Thank you, Mr. Soriano. Seeing no other discussion, I will ask for a roll call.
Soriano?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Greenberg?
Yes.
Mako?
Yes.
Shepaka?
Abstain.
Tamarkin?
Yes.
Wester?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming back and, someday we'll all come and take office. I need them. All right. We will now move on to unfinished business. We have none. New business, we have none. Official reports, Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Roth.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mr. Chair.
Director of Planning, Mr. Blackford.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, sir.
Our city council is on, Mr. Blackford.
A couple of updates right now going on in public hearing now through December 19th, our annual budget discussions and that. And a public comment is next week. We hope to have that budget passed December 19th. Also, on the last agenda, our economic development team has been working with the folks at the Crescent at Central Park, working on a revised development agreement that should, if approved, spur some additional development. So I would anticipate 2023, again, Crescent at Central Park is where we've seen a couple of medical buildings here recently. And I think last year, year and a half ago, we saw the rezoning for multifamily. I think that once this goes through, if it does go through, we're going to see additional requests before Planning Commission for even more development in that area. So exciting for 2023. And those are my council updates. Thank you.
We look forward to that. Mr. Hicks, CIC, I think we had a meeting?
Yes, this Friday, the City of Gehanna and the Gehanna CIC will be hosting the November Breakfast with Business First over at the Peak at Edison from 7:00 to 9:00.
Thank you. Madam Mary, I saw you grab a speaker slip. You have something to say?
No, I was thinking, no, I'm sure Director Blackford is not.
All right. And the chair has no comments? And no correspondence and actions? Any comments from our members?
None for me.
Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. Lot to be thankful for.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mako. Seeing no more comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.